Okay, it is six o'clock. I'm gonna call the public hearing to order. Um, May 16th, Tuesday, six o'clock. Taking a look at village zoning and flood hazard regulation amendments. This hearing was um warned in the proper places fifteen prior to this, fifteen days prior to this meeting. Um, I'm going to ask the public to weigh in on first, I'm gonna ask about, oh, I wanna talk to you about conversions and changes of use. It wasn't something that we planned to bring to the um trustees, but in looking over the our work on employee housing, we realized that it references changes, conversions and changes of use, and this is something that we did when Alan was chairman of the select board. We revised this to make it easier for people to um turn over a commercial property into, you know, from a restaurant into a store or whatever without requiring them jump through, jumping through so many hoops. So um I'll entertain, I'll entertain public comments on this section of conversions and changes of use. I asked um Jared to make a bunch of extra copies. I don't know if everybody has a copy. Are there any public comments on this? This might be the quickest public hearing on there.
We were only on section one.
I know, I'm just getting very excited. Hi Suzanne. Could you please sign in? You guys, there's a something coming around. We're taking a look at um we're taking a look at conversions and changes of use, and there's some extra papers there. We made some changes um like a year and a half ago to make it easier for commercial properties to change use without jumping through as many hoops as they used to have to.
Is this, is this the same that was on the link on the website?
Yes, it is. It's the same.
So the link contained two of the same pages.
Okay.
So is this the correct?
This is conversions and changes of use, and we're gonna be looking at employee housing and
Five two oh point one four.
Yes, five two oh point one four, five two oh point one five, and also
Okay, so this page was missing then, right? No, okay. Oh, I see, the first couple pages were missing. You're aware of that, right?
No, I was not aware of that.
Alright, so when you link, this is what prints out. And so that was insufficient. I don't know if you have to move on to meeting because of that.
No, this is the whole thing.
Is it?
Yeah, the conversions and changes of use are at the top, employee housing's at the bottom, and the definitions we're adding is on the back.
I'm confused. So, show me this page there.
Oh, that page doesn't have to be.
Oh, okay.
That's just a public warning.
I apologize.
No, that's okay. That's just a public hearing warning.
Making trouble with it.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I guess I do the
Eric?
Just for clarification, so I understand that, on um section B, we get two subsections there, one and two. Says that structures located on a subdivided lot which conforms to the lot size, setback, park, and other requirements applicable to the relevant district in proposed use. What, if it's I get the thinking about the accessory use if it's all on the same lot. But if you're subdividing, how does it come into play that if you're subdividing a lot, it's its own lot, so it wouldn't necessarily fit as an accessory use, 'cause it would be on its own lot, is my misunderstanding of how that's working, or?
Yeah, I agree. So is that like a hypoth- if it was hypothetically subdivided, it would conform?
Let's see, accessory structure such as a garage or barn may be converted to a principal use allowed within the district in which it is located only if the structure is located on a subdivided lot which conforms to the lot size, setback, parking, and other requirements. So garages and barns are only allowed on a subdivided lot that's already subdivided, or if the zoning district in which it's located allows more than one principal use on a lot, and all requirements applicable to the what's the problem with it?
I guess if you're If you're subdividing the lot, then it has no relationship to the original lot that you would have the accessory structure on.
It's no longer an ADU.
It's on a different lot.
Right.
So now it's a
But
Now it's not, no longer an accessory structure. It's already subdivided. Should the word be subdivided bowl?
No, what they're saying, I think, this is my interpretation, is that if you have a structure such as a garage or a barn, and they're on a subdivided lot which conforms to the lot size, so you had a big lot that was subdivided, but it still meets the requirements of the lot size, then it can be converted.
To principal use.
Right.
Instead of a garage or barn.
Correct.
Yeah, that's how I'm reading it too. So what's the problem with it? Yeah, Alan.
So if the lot has been subdivided, um it is no longer an accessory structure.
Yep, so there's a
It's on a different lot now.
Accessory structure such as may be converted, right, it's not on, it's not accessory structure. Now it's a principal use.
So what if the word read, if the structure is located on a lot which conforms to the lot size, setback, parking, and other requirements applicable to the relevant district in proposed use? Because I'm a bit confused actually with that there, 'cause subdivided lot, you're subdividing a principal parcel, so you have a, you have a parent parcel, and then if you're looking to have an ADU, it's gonna be on that same principal parcel, not another subdivided parcel. So a subdivision means that the parent parcel is being split.
Right, right.
And we're not talking about that necessarily.
Right, is this, we're not allowing that in this language to be split without going through the right channels. So how did you wanna change it?
Say the words again.
By re- potentially by just removing the word subdivided. So if the structure is located on a lot, or par should be parcel, which conforms to the lot size, setback, parking, and other requirements applicable to the relevant district in proposed use. So, use my property for an example.
Yeah.
I could turn my, my lots large enough, my garage has the setbacks applicable, I have parking requirements on my lot. I could make my garage a primary use dwelling without doing a subdivision, 'cause I can't subdivide. I only have a third of an acre.
So
So
Here
Are we intending, so I guess it's the intention of what we want, is this seems to me to be limiting? Basically saying you can only flip an ADU to a principal, to a primary
If it's already subdivided.
If it's subdivided or has the ability to be
I don't know if you wanna say that though.
I, I understand what Ryan's saying.
I think I wanna say that though.
No, no, because the, the intent of an accessory dwelling is that you can take a smaller, um what's the word, a, a smaller building on your lot and convert it into housing.
Right.
But you don't want to say, you're gonna subdivide it, but it still has to be as big as a regular lot, because that kinda defeats the purpose
Mm-hmm.
of getting more
Yeah, but I think it's, I don't think I wanted to say that though. I think it wanted, it needs to be on a subdivided lot that's already subdivided. I mean, we're, I didn't really interact
Then it's not
No, because the owner could, like, for instance, in say Ryan's case, he has a building on his lot, but it's only a third of an acre, that could be converted to an
Right, I understand all that, but I'm not sure I want that many more buildings in town. Better, 'cause they're all gonna be Airbnb's and they're not gonna give us the housing we need.
No, that's, that's one of the solutions to the hu- to the housing crisis.
So again, and I'm a perfect example. My ranch is smaller than my garage. If I change my garage to an ADU at its full capacity, it'll be larger square footage than my home. I'm renting my home Airbnb and living in my garage to afford to live there. That's
You're doing that right now?
Yeah, hosting.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Right, so that's a hosted Airbnb. That's something, or hosted STR, whatever, you know. That is something I think we should be encouraging, frankly.
And I think that's what
Yeah, I think that's a bigger discussion though than what we're trying to do with this document.
I think that's what the state, that's what the state's encouraging.
Yeah, they're encouraging that, but that housing bill hasn't even passed yet.
Sure, but I mean, it's
I'm not sure I wanna change it.
I don't think so.
Well, Alan, do you remember why we had that language?
Um, well, I'm wondering if it's um, if somebody doesn't want to subdivide and branch off their accessory dwelling unit, is, did we mean a subdividable lot?
That would make sense. A subdivitable lot.
Well then Well then it gets rid of, it gets rid of ADUs then, because if it's a subdivivable lot, then it's no longer an accessory dwelling, it's a primary dwelling
But what if it's a subdivided lot, you only have the
It can't be subdivided. I, I think we're getting
Thank you, probably.
Yeah, I think you guys are thinking too much into it. When we put it in there, there was, if you have a principal structure already on the property, you have an accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
If you'd like to subdivide that lot, your new lot with the ADU on it becomes a principal structure until such time you actually build a principal, you have that thirty percent clause in your bylaws right now.
Mm-hmm.
That new law could have then a principal structure and an ADU, and your old law that has a principal structure could either remain a principal structure or then complement another accessory unit on that lot. The subdivision has to be in there so that you don't have two principal structures on one lot.
Yeah, that's, that's how I'm reading it.
So
Sorry, I apologize, but if we could uh have people use the mic, that would be fantastic.
Her mics aren't on?
No, I, I think if the audience comes up to that mic there.
Oh, yeah, can, will you guys mind doing that? Do you want me to push it closer to you?
That'll probably work too, I'm sorry guys.
Sorry Steve.
Thank you very much.
You, you could be that Steve if you wanna if you want Steve to be able to hear you.
So then I guess I'll ask this, so a primary dwelling is just the larger of the two?
Correct, as your bylaws are written now, yeah, it has that thirty percent clause.
Right. So it's not possible, so to convert a garage building to a lot, to now the principal? And now that what was the primary is now the ADU, because it's smaller?
You can do, this is talking about if you want two principles, I think, so the accessory becomes the principal if you subdivide that lot, it could become the principal structure. There's nothing saying that you could, like you've done, move your accessory becomes your principal and your principal vice versa, or
Mm-hmm.
making your accessory dwelling unit larger, so then your principal's that thirty percent minimum, and then that one becomes the accessory dwelling unit.
Yep, so that's, we're, that's, we're able to do that, okay.
Allison, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
I'm very glad you're here. Does anybody have any other issues with the conversions and changes of use?
Does it, does it automatically become the primary use? So you have, you have this subdivided lot with your accessory use that becomes the primary, and then you build the larger home eventually as your primary. Does it automatically, the smaller structure automatically revert to ADU, or does it have to go through DRB again?
Your, yeah, single family home will just be a permitted use.
So then you wouldn't have two primary uses on the same lot, so it's automatically
Yeah. Okay, I'm getting that now.
That should be clear though when you're not around.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Because I can see that confusion happening in the planning office, honestly, that you should, you should think about how to put that language in there so that it's clear for folks that I sit next to you.
I can see Steve. Steve, you can't hear still, can you?
I'm uh still living here, but
Yeah, I, I think if the audience actually gets up and comes up to the mic, he'll be able to hear the reading.
Here comes Alan.
Yeah, just take a chair out. What a great idea, thank you.
Yeah, make a pathway maybe.
Yeah.
Thank you Judy.
You're welcome. I could see you, you're in my line of vision. I could see you like holding your ear and stuff.
It's gonna be my ear while I was talking.
Yeah, let's keep it in there. Can you hear me now Steve?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So are we leaving the wording as is?
I'm fine with that. What do you, Ryan, what do you think?
I'm honestly still a little confused, so I mean, if it's a subdivided parcel, right, so I'll tell you again, use my, my property as an example. In order for my garage to become a primary dwelling, I would have to subdivide my parcel into two separate parcels. I'd have to have the ability to do that. Otherwise, as it stands on a singular parcel, I can't make, I can't convert the barn into a larger living space than the primary.
Your garage is the larger
Yep.
of the two, so your garage already and it's a detached, I mean, or, and it's been existing, so you're
Yep.
I mean, how you currently have it is an accessory dwelling unit does not exceed thirty percent of the total applicable floor area of a single unit. Your single dwelling unit, your primary residence.
Yep.
So you're already nonconforming if your garage accessory unit is bigger than your principal structure.
Sure.
But maybe it's a livable floor space.
So it'll be the I know there's, I know I'm just using one specific example, but I, you know, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around it, I guess.
Say you
Just a thought, would it matter that existing buildings, as in your case, just keep using that Ryan, that you would be yours to be maybe grandfathered in because it's already there, but if someone was building a new building, that definitely fall into the category that we're talking about now?
Or converting.
We're converting, but mostly, yeah, I agree, but most pre-existing barns, garages are nonconforming based on a thirty percent. I mean, there's a lot of lesser living space in a huge barn. I mean, that's, that's Vermont. I mean, you get a small house and the barn's bigger for the animals, like, you know, so um I, I think this word, so lot, parcel is subdivided lot, yeah. So it can only become a primary dwelling if the lot's subdivitable, so otherwise, and then it can, then there can be an ADU for both. I can see that, but I, I, I can see that, that word, that's, that's not very clean to me, 'cause I'm confused. Not for nothing, but I do this a lot, so.
Okay, so right now we're just taking input, and then when we have our meeting, we can make changes then.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, time and place.
So let's not get stuck on it.
Yep.
On the agenda, we're gonna take a look at public comments on each of these sections, so basically we're saying one
So we
be one, number one
I'm starring it.
may need some work. May need clarification. Okay, is there any other public comments on our conversions and changes of use, changes? Hearing nobody jump in, we will take
Thank you.
Now, to, no, you're welcome. That's why we invited you here. Um, section five twenty point fifteen on employee housing, this is brand new language. It wasn't an issue that we planned on working on this year, but we had people come to us and on, particularly on Wilbur Avenue, that we're having a lot of problems with employee housing there, and a lot of concerns about the young people that live there and the conditions they live under too. I mean, the people that came to us weren't just concerned about themselves, they were concerned about the young people living in um living in their employee housing on Wilbur Avenue as well. So we developed this language with a lot of help from Regional and a lot of help from our planning commission here, and hashed it out the last few meetings. People had a chance to take a look at it. Do we have any public comments? Or board comments?
I have a comment.
Judy has a comment.
So um at our last meeting, I made a comment that I, I you know, we hear from people all the time that I've heard a lot of concern about the size of the rooms, and um someone approached me and informed me that Rutland City has language in their employee housing that, that defines square footage, and the square footage of a room for one person has to be um seventy square feet, which would be like seven by ten, and for each additional person is fifty square feet. Um, and, and my concern is that, you know, some, that there might be a lot of overcrowding in some of the the existing houses that are being converted into employee housing, so I'd like to get some feedback on if people think we should define a minimum square foot for a bedroom, a rented room in one of these employee houses or boarding houses, whatever you wanna call it.
Just a quick question, so are these structures assumed being sprinkler?
Assumed being
Sprinklers.
Oh, sprinkler? I think it's part of the Vermont State and um Martha sent me that rental um rights, rental rights, it's part of that document with the state of Vermont that I know that my sister has a daycare and she has to have things in place for that too.
Is that based more on occupancy as well? Isn't it fifteen? It's fif- it's fifteen, right?
Fifteen, by the state of Vermont?
Yeah, fif- yeah, fifteen triggers it, so and we're saying two per room, so that'd be seven bedrooms or greater.
Also, I know that the people on Wilbur Avenue were concerned about um, rather the people the young people who live there even have access to refrigeration, 'cause they're keeping everything in snowbanks in the summer, I mean, in the winter keeping their food in coolers and snowbanks and on the roof. And I don't know if they're just keeping six packs on the roof, but it's not like they were, there was a lot of coolers in the snowbanks. So I wonder if they even have access
It's like that is twenty point three square feet, so fifty square feet for a whole person to occupy a limit is pretty tiny, have you put a twin bed in there? But at least five by six square feet to have everything else in that room.
Is that the same formula? Let's say we have a, a large room, and we have multiple sets of bunks. Is there, it has to be fifty square feet per person within this large room, a room the size that I don't know, Alan, I'm not good at this room. Uh, you know, divide that by fifty, that means like you put, you know, twelve people in this room?
But bunk rooms aren't, the fire marshal won't sign off on bunk rooms, so it's two occupants per bedroom, correct me if I'm wrong.
So it has to be a bedroom, not an open space that were, uh, that, that they're able to multiple
In my, in my experience, it's discretionary by the fire marshal. So I've seen bunk rooms that are okayed by the fire marshal because they're properly egressed and everything's top notch, but I've also seen bunk rooms that are absolute death traps that they would absolutely not okay. Um, but I believe they, they start with two occupants per bedroom, and then it's discretionary beyond that point based on, based on a interior by the fire marshal.
Conceivably, we could just come up with a square footage for two people if we're saying two occupants per bedroom, which
Well, there's definitely more than that going, I'm proposing for Prospect Street, right?
Well, right, well, and that's, I'm just, I just threw out that formula as an example that we can build on.
Right.
So it's seventy square feet for one person, which is like seven by ten.
And consider two per bedroom.
And for two, you add fifty, so it's a hundred and twenty square feet, which would be a ten by twelve. And then if you had three people, you would have to go to a hundred and seventy square feet.
But I think whether or not the building is, is um has a sprinkler system
Mm-hmm.
raised into that, at least my experience with the fire marshal, like you have what Ryan is pointing is you have been into um two people per bedroom, but um I've seen them approved where there's been multiple bunk beds, um given that everything else complies and they has proper egress. So in my understanding, if it's, if the building is sprinkled, sprinkler, um that there is no absence of any other um role, there is no um maximum occupancy for that structure.
If it's sprinkler, they can have as many as they want?
Yeah.
Wow.
So I don't know how you
Well, that's why I think having some kind of a square foot requirement
Right.
for how many people can be in a bedroom will help alleviate overcrowding.
Right.
Because you only have so many rooms.
Yeah.
So during, yeah.
And then just assuming that if it's a building that houses however many people
Mm-hmm.
that in order to comply for sleeping for that many, that they have a sprinklers, sprinkler system, 'cause they did have a big room, um they could have multiple, multiple people in there. Just wanna clarify that we're talking, we're talking about occupancy like that, you're talking about a building that has sprinklers in the um
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you have any more comments on employee housing?
Just give, just echo down in Boston's, uh, one fifty for the first person, one hundred for each additional.
For, for a bedroom?
Yeah, just, just like
In Boston, wow.
Just something I would
Wow. Would you say one fifty for, for person and
One fifty plus one hundred.
One fifty for a person. One hundred for each after that.
Is there any um limit as to how many?
There's, there's always an occupancy limit for a building.
Is, is it
Yeah, if it, if you're renting it, there is, if it's family, obviously it's
Right, you just supplement there.
Yeah.
Derek, is that for um housing, employee housing, or you
No, that, that's just general code.
In general.
Yeah, well, we're talking about employee housing.
Cause you're You're talking about employee housing.
Yeah, we're talking about employee housing.
Specifically, yeah.
And after we talk about employee housing, we're talking, we're gonna talk about definitions that we have for that. Um, one thing I wanted to bring up with employee housing, which we, I talked about with Martha and Allison, and then we just were so pressed for time at that last meeting where we talked about employee housing that I didn't bring it up, is that um I'd like to add it to the commercial districts, because it makes sense to have employee housing in commercial areas where the shuttle comes, and where they have sewage, and where they have water, and and right now it's only allowed in the residential areas. So that's something I'd like to change tonight if possible, people agree?
I definitely agree with that.
What do you think?
I'd like to ask you about that too, uh, why are inns excluded? Inns and hotels are excluded from employee housing, at least that's how I read this.
Yeah, because, well, we have a better definition for inn right now, but employee housing currently in love though is going into what people are calling inns because our definition was so lame for inn that anything went. And so now we're being very specific and saying employee housing cannot occupy an inn. We also heard from innkeepers and our, and when we were collecting data that are saying that people are looking for inns, they're looking for rooms and inns, and now they're getting, you know, gobbled up by employee housing all over the state.
And, and so a motel such as the Timber Inn, which is not an inn, it's more like a hotel, is that excluded from having employ- being used for employee housing in our residential commercial district?
Well, it would have to, you know, it would have to go
Doesn't seem to be included in this. It seems to be excluded in this actually. Is that correct?
Yeah, we wanna take it away from inns, we wanna take employee housing away from inns so that we can make sure that the neighborhood and
So the Timber Inn
It's basically like having somebody
Public municipality system, and it's on a sewer line, and it has town water, can't be used for employee housing, is that what I'm reading? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well
Well, I protest that.
Well, you are, you actually follow our new definition of inn, in that you actually live there.
Right.
But
In a different building.
Right, but the current inns where employee housing is going in, the people don't even live there. Yes, Alan?
Um, our current definition in the um move zoning uh states in, in provides um overnight lodging for transients. And if you look up transient, it's a, a short term passing through kind of thing, um which is still ambiguous.
Yeah.
And, and the new definition references transient guests. Even, you know providing housing for employees on a, you know, seasonal level, can you say four, five, six months is a transient period? I, I don't know.
Yes, you can.
You know, again, it's up to interpretation, and perhaps there needs to be I'm sorry, do you, you wanna sort of nail down the definitions, but you still want a little leeway here and there, and um, and I'm you know, not sure how that works, but um
You're kinda jumping ahead to definitions, but that's okay. Are, are we all set with employee housing as far as public input, which is what you wanted to bring to the table? We ready to move on to definitions? Okay, let's move on to definitions. So the first definition that we are proposing to change is obviously employee housing, 'cause we didn't even have a definition for that, I don't think. Oh, we had, yeah, rooming boarding house, it kind of fell under that. So our definition for employee housing, housing that is owned, controlled, or facilitated by an employer and provided for the occupancy of the employee in conjunction with their employment, or if applicable, the employee's family or household members. We hashed that one out a lot this meeting. Do you have any comments about that? Moving on, moving
Like, I do, yes, so housing that is owned, controlled, or facilitated? So, does it have to be owned? Leasing is control. Facilitated is like a property manager. So
We had a lot of trouble with, that was a meeting that you weren't at, trying to figure out if that was a good word or not to use.
Sure.
Whether that covered it all.
So, so this to me reads that housing that is owned, housing that is leased, or housing that is managed by an employer, provided for the occupancy of employee in conjunction with their employment, and if applicable, the employee's family or household members. So owned, controlled equals leased, facilitated equals managed.
We had a lot of trouble coming up with a better word, if that sounds like a better word.
No, and I, and I, no, no, and I, I'm just saying.
Change the words.
No, I'm.
You're just saying that's what it means.
No, but exactly, so I'm just saying, are we trying to limit it to employee housing? Is that only that businesses that own housing can have their employees there, or is it just?
Well, that word facilitated was how we tried to not limit it.
Okay, no, I, I'm, I'm all for not limiting it, that's, I'm just saying, it's doing me off, but.
That was our word for not limiting it, but we had a lot of discussion over whether that word really.
Sure.
Covered it or not.
All right.
Suzanne?
Just a quick question, so.
Can you come to the mic for Steve's sake? Thanks. You can move the mic around.
Oh, yes, so.
There you go.
So, okay, so, um, so my question is, is there a reason you use control instead of leased?
Not really.
Okay, I mean, I think everyone's familiar with what lease means versus control.
So your put is, do you think that's a better word there?
I, I, for layman terms, I think it lends itself better if it's simplicity you're looking for.
Okay, well, that's something that we'll definitely discuss at our meeting.
Noted.
Yeah, noted, I wrote it down.
Me too.
Okay, um, rooming boarding house, you ready for that one? A building in which rooms are rented, serve as the renter's principal residence for more than thirty days. One or more meals, housekeeping, or laundry service may be provided. A rooming boarding house shall not have no more than eight rooms for rent. Anything?
Uh, I think you have to read bed and breakfast, I mean, that looks like a bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast, a resi- a residential structure with ten or fewer rooms for rent to transients or overnight lodging. By the day or by the week, the structure must be the primary residence of the owner or operator of the bed and breakfast, who may provide meals only to guests, not to the general public.
Yep. Primary residence is the big, big one there.
Yeah.
Primary residence of the owner.
Well, I'm gonna move on, and then if anybody has anything, you can still bring it up. An, an owner, an owner occupied building used to provide overnight or short term accommodations with one or more meals, transient guests, and shall not have more than twenty-five guest rooms, which shall be primarily assessed from inside the building as opposed to a motel.
Are you the question of it?
Yeah.
Trying to make this a, a good beginning. Uh, I'm curious about the current use, um, we got some inns in town, Jackson Gore, for example, Fox Run, Pettigrew, none of those properties are owner occupied. So, if you create this definition that they have to be owner occupied, how do you address, like Jackson Gore will never be owner occupied.
I, I think that's more of a motel. Sorry, I'm sorry, hotel, hotel, I apologize.
It's a hotel.
So there are.
Just because they have inn in the word doesn't mean that they're an inn by definition.
Yeah, or that they will be.
So Pettigrew inn, I don't know if it's an inn or a hotel, that will have to come in for a change of use.
The Pettigrew, isn't the Pettigrew right now employee housing?
But it doesn't matter what it's being used for, it's defined as an inn, so per this definition, the owner of that inn would have to live there.
Right.
So if they don't live there, would they have to come in for a change of use to make it into a hotel or?
Employee housing.
Yeah, they would, but, you know, they already got their employee housing in there when we had our, our insuff- insufficient definition of inn, so.
You know, but you're just looking at, you're looking at a snapshot of time, and it, that would be.
Right, so you're saying in the future, in the future. Yeah, it would not be classified as an inn unless the owners live there. According to this new definition, which we're trying to narrow down exactly what an inn is and what it is not.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Okay, and so we, we qualified short term, less than thirty days, and transient, a short term guest whose permanent address for legal purposes is not the lodging facility where they are staying. And Alan, you had an idea about transient?
Um, in relation, I had an idea about transient, or a question about transient in relation to inn, um, catering to transient guests. Um, you know, like I said, transient is up to, um, qualification and in argument, I guess, if you're talking transient, it's kind of vague. I don't know what other word you might use. Something about.
What are you suggesting for transient to make it more?
Ooh, gosh, I don't know.
What'd you say to?
I would have to be open for that. Yeah, I don't know.
So how does, how does it come into effect if you read the definition of transient? Like, what are the ramifications of it based on these changes?
Allison, did you want to say something about that?
I was just clarifying, making sure that they, everyone noticed that short term was also defined. And so it's not as vague as it is currently. Short, it now has a less than thirty days, so transient has a defined time period with it now. Before it didn't.
Yep.
Yeah. Do we have any more public comments on, we do, Jeannie?
Um.
Jeannie, can you use the mic for Steve's, Steve's sake?
Sure enough, thank you. Um, under rooming boarding houses, and when I see, uh, shall have no more than eight rooms for rent, um, should there be, uh, a number of people that might be in those eight rooms?
I hear what you're saying.
Um, cause you could have.
A huge room.
Five, you could have two, you could have three.
Yeah.
I don't know, something to consider.
Great point, Jean.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think the only issue we've had with that, I'm thinking of Andy and, um, how she's saying, you know, young couples want their babies and toddlers in the room with them and she had.
But that's more for bed and breakfast than a boarding house.
Yeah, that's true.
But again, I.
I think the number of people should be addressed, um, at some point.
Either number of people, or again, the number of people that can be accommodated in those rooms.
Yeah.
Your square footage, that was, you know, it's for further discussion, it's just zoning best practice doesn't put the sort of standard language that you would want in your section into your definition language. So we have to be really careful where we put it.
Gotcha.
It just, you normally don't put your parameters into your definitions.
Okay.
Okay.
So number of people in each room would have to go.
You want it sort of under your employees, employee housing section.
Under our.
Or under that rooming and boarding section, yeah.
Standards for that particular, okay.
I have a question.
Suzanne?
So, um, in the definition of transient, I guess I'm curious what, what the need is for that definition? Because I don't, I don't think I see transient refer to, you know, if we're talking, you, you've got short term defined and you've got, um, you know, the, um, principal residence just defined. And I think, so like what Alan was starting to say, like, what is the purpose of defining transient in the?
I guess because it's inside, it's an inn for sure.
Well, and, and transient person would be someone that comes to Ludlow to say work the ski season and leave. So they're here for months, but that is not their permanent residence. And we have quite a few people that come here for.
Oh, so that's what you're.
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
See, I don't get that, I got transient as, um, they could be here for, you know, any amount of short term. For, very, you know, very.
Well, we're saying here, they can't be here for longer than thirty days, right?
Well, that's short term, and then.
No, because it says a transient, it is a short term, yes.
That's true, so that's.
Short term, yes.
So transients can go to inns, but not, you know, but they can't be there more than thirty days.
So that means they can't live in a rooming house then, because they have to be there for more than thirty days.
Right, so that doesn't say transient, it says renter.
Serve as the renter's principal residence for more than thirty days.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to show how each of these is different. Do we have any more public comments on our public hearing?
I guess I have a question, sorry.
No, no, that's why we're here.
Um, so the, so the boarding house, um, so they are rented, that are rented, serve as the renter's principal residence for more than thirty days. One or more meals, housekeeping, and or laundry may be provided. Is it required that they're provided?
No, maybe provided.
Maybe.
Yeah, I had trouble with that the first time I read it too.
Why, why have that in there? Does it matter?
It's always been part of the definition of a rooming and boarding house, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, it's under, Manchester has a similar definition for boarding house, including lodging house and rooming house.
Wait, a lot of our definitions have come from Manchester. Do we have any more public comments? Okay, in that case, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting for, I don't need a motion for that, do I? Adjourn our public hearing and reopen our normal planning commission meeting for the month of May. Pro call by recording secretary. All members present except.
Ted.
Ted Steyhouse and Andrea Goldman. Opening statement by chair. Of course, I didn't bring that, I have it on my computer though. Okay, opening statement by chair. Okay, it's, obviously I've already greeted you guys, it is nice to have you here today for sure. Your comments are welcome at any time during the meeting by raising your hand, being recognized by the chair, except during our work agenda items, which are items, um, seven, eight, and nine today. We also may ask for citizens' comments before voting on a motion during the discussion period. There's no point ever in being repetitious, once referred it, it can be noted, we can move on. And I encourage all board members to comment and ask questions throughout the meeting. Okay. Approval and consideration of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda, do we have any?
No.
Approval of minutes. Guys, have a chance to look over Judy's wonderful minutes for the reorganization meeting minutes.
I found some typos in my, the minutes that I wrote.
Oh, you did?
Well, I'll say this, just with me not attending that, I can't necessarily vote on it, so.
Oh, right.
Okay.
But Steve was there.
Steve was, okay.
He heard everything, right, Steve?
Yeah, but he's, we don't have our alternate language yet, so I'm not sure Steve can vote on it either.
Jeez.
That's gonna be our first one of our first items here.
Okay.
So I guess we're tabling minutes, because we only have two people, so we can't vote on it.
Okay.
So we'll table for next month.
Is there any discussion on, um, minutes?
Um, yeah, what did you want to bring up?
I just got a question on, um, your discussion on number six, adopt rules and procedures. You are sort of interchanging the word, when you guys were talking about, um, who's gonna be allowed to, to sort of join these boards. Uh, you sort of, in some sentences you say citizen, another sentence you say resident. Um, so I'm trying to see where, you know, what's, what, what do you guys think about this difference, and why did you say that, uh, you know, four members of the commission shall be citizens of Ludlow, but the fifth resident, fifth member, sorry, the commission shall be a citizen of an abutting town. Um, and then you wrote that.
That there was a discussion around using terms of resident or citizen.
Well, wasn't it that citizen is somebody that's registered to vote?
Yeah, that is allowed to vote in the town.
That's the definition.
That's not the definition of a resident though, definition of a resident.
No, which is why we took out resident and put in citizen.
Citizen is just, citizen's not a resident, citizen's just someone who's allowed to legally be in a, in a location or a country.
A citizen is someone who is, that votes.
No, it's not.
I think we need a definition for citizen.
Webster problem does a good job.
Yeah.
What?
Webster's dictionary, probably.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, there's no, there's no requirement of a citizen.
Yeah.
Citizen.
I agree with that.
It's like you got to talk it through, you know, it's not, you know, biting yourself.
I think, is that why we also said voting in the town of Ludlow?
That's my next question on that, I know you're gonna talk about the, the alternate, so I'll, I'll hold my comment to that, but your comments on the alternate, you, you mentioned that the alternate needs to be a resident of Ludlow in on the voter checklist.
Right, so I see where you're, I see what you're saying.
But you guys don't need to be voters to be on this board, so why would an alternate need to be a voter?
We, we do want our board to be voters.
I know, but you're not required to be a registered voter to be in an appointed position, like you're saying that the alternate has to be a registered voter.
Well, we want to say whether we both need to be a registered voter, that's what we're trying to say.
Okay. It's not about you, Steve, but I get it, I'll just point to note that if, if you're gonna have an alternate and the requirement is that they're a registered voter, which that's not a requirement in the state statute, but it's not a requirement to be a full board member to be a registered voter, it just seems a little complicated.
Well, we want to change it, so it is, we thought we were doing that with the word citizen, obviously we're, you know, maybe we're not doing that, what we wanted to do. But we didn't warn that we were gonna make that change, so I'm not sure if we can make that this time. Plus, we only have three members of our board here.
You're not voting on the minutes anyway, so.
I'm not what?
We're not voting on the minutes anyway.
No, we're not, yeah, we're not, but that is something we need to clarify.
And we can't change the minutes, I mean, that's what I said.
No, I know, that's what we said, exactly, I'm just saying, that's probably something we need to take a look at though.
Whenever we're looking to adopt the rules of procedure, we should probably take another look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we need to, when we do finally figure those out, we gotta all sign it and date it and, you know, it has to be very official. So today we're gonna talk about alternate, and now it looks like we're gonna have to go back and look at that part again too. We'll have to do that next month.
Sorry.
No, no, I'm glad you did that, I, we thought that's what we were doing. Are there any other comments about the minutes, which we're not really gonna approve this time anyway? Okay, moving on, do we have any comments from citizens? Okay, moving on. Uh, article, not article, but item number seven, our alternate language.
Wait a second, Terry.
Go ahead, Jeannie.
I think we can approve the reorg- reorganization minutes because we have a quorum.
Okay, for the reorganization.
Yeah, because it's two months out now.
But he wasn't there.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I was too busy taking notes.
No, that's okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, so an alternate will be contacted if there's a lack of quorum. The chair or vice chair is the only person to go, contact the alternate. The alternate must be a resident of Ludlow and on the voter checklist. The alternate will only vote if there's an even number or lack of quorum, the alternate shall abide by all rules of procedure. This was language we were considering last month, and we might have bring, we kind of, we tabled it, because we were having a lot of discussion and didn't come to consensus about it. Summon us Ryan and Judy, you know, what do you think about this? And also Andy weighed in with me through her, through email about how she thought about it. Hi, would you mind signing in? Over here. Thank you.
So planning commission rules or procedure, so we're looking.
Yeah, we're looking at the language for an alternate.
Because there wa- there was no language.
We didn't have any language for an alternate. And then the, the select board appointed Steve Myers as an alternate, so we need language for an alternate.
Again, I think it came up because at that point Ted hadn't signed up to be reelected, so there was three spaces where I originally signed on, but then there was only two when Ted came back in.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm good with it, as long as, I mean, if we address the language of a, of resident in voter checklist needs to apply to all four plus the alternate. The fifth member can be a resident of an abutting town.
Yeah, this one, actually, this is clearer than our other one, because it says it must be a resident and on the voter checklist.
So maybe we need to change the other one to just say the same. So maybe we need to change the other one to just say the same.
Right, but we can't do that now, I don't think, cause we didn't warn it.
Right.
Yeah.
But we can do it next month. Um, the only thing Andy had a problem with was that she doesn't think that the alternate should vote if there's an even number. She said she thinks that's giving too much power to the alternate or too much say to the alternate. What do you guys think about that? She thinks they should just, they should just vote if there's a lack of a quorum.
Oh, so like not being a tiebreaker?
Yeah, that's what she's saying.
So, so in, in other words, if we had four people here tonight,
Yeah.
then they wouldn't be able to vote. Correct?
Right, that's what she's saying. I'm not saying that.
That goes against the language if you not wanting to have an even, even number to start with, though, so that basically if there was four people there, you wouldn't want it, you didn't wanna have an even.
That's correct.
Yes, that, kind of the point, right?
Also, I mean, as, according to the rules you just said, Ted lives in a, in a next, a budding town, so he would have to be the fifth member. Unless I heard that wrong.
So, we're, we're saying leave it in?
I say leave it in.
I say leave it in too.
Jared, may I add something?
You want, okay, we have some people wanna add to our discussion?
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, no, I'm, I'm recognizing you.
Oh, oh, thank you. Um, an alternate, from what I've read, is considered a member of the board. Even if they're not voting on things, so you must have a, a quorum of board members and it must be a majority on, on votes. And I did the math and, and, um, don't know if I'm presenting this correctly, but if if you vote, like he's not necessarily the tiebreaker. So if you have three members present plus the alternate, that's four members of the board, you still need a majority to pass stuff, so you would still need three people to vote.
Right.
Yes, whether, whether or not the alternate is voting on.
Yeah.
Right, correct.
Right, and this is saying that if there's three, only three people, he doesn't, they, the alternate does not vote. That's what this is saying.
That, well, that's, no, that's.
No?
No, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
So, so, I think it becomes redundant, if, if you have a quorum of members and you need a majority, then, you know, you have to be unanimous because you have three people, and that would be a majority including the alternate. So tonight, you have a quorum.
Right, so we don't need the, so we don't need the alternate to vote.
Then because there are three. Correct.
But even if two people wanted something and one person didn't, the two people are the majority and they would rule, right?
Well, no, you would need a unanimous vote of the people here, because there are currently four board members. The alternate is a board member, is considered a board member, so
No, they're not. They're not considered a board member. They're not considered a board member unless we don't have a quorum.
Maybe I just read it, but I, I think, I think if you look at the definition of alternate in the, um, planning zoning docs, I will refer to Allison, who's probably more.
Well, go ahead, Allison.
Yeah, did we, we probably should look at, um, the state of Vermont rules of procedure and ethics manual does give poll voting rights to, um, alternates, because their sole purpose is to fill in the place of a regular.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. I'd say it didn't feel right.
Board member.
Okay, so if there are only.
You call them, and there's certain, your rules of procedures can say when you call them into action, basically. Um, and when you do, they then become a regular board seat at that time.
Right, but you have to call, that's what this is saying there. The vice, the chair or vice chair is the only person to contact the alternate.
Yeah.
Right, right. The alternate doesn't sit in at every meeting. The alternate's purpose is, um, if somebody refuses themselves from a meeting, they then step in for those proceedings.
Right.
If somebody's gonna be, you know, on maternity leave, say, for three months, and they step in for three months, yes, they're called in for a specific role during that time, that's when they're given a full board seat and they're given voter privileges as well.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
So.
Right.
So I have a question then on that, because I wasn't familiar with that. Does that mean if anyone can't go, like, so we have a five-member board, and, um, say Ted's not here, then he would fill in when there are four other members or only if we need a quorum?
Well, it's saying, we're saying here, if there's an even number, so he would fill in then, or she?
Right, but you just said it's different in the state.
If, if you've been activated by the.
The chair.
The chair or the vice chair.
Or vice chair.
By your rules, then, yes, they would, even if you already had a quorum, they still would be that fifth.
That's what I wanted, no.
Right.
If they're called in and, and taking their place as an alternate, they would have poll voting rights.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you see any problem with the language we have here for alternate? You do?
We didn't want that more time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Terry.
An alternate will be ca- no, no, we're trying to get it right.
Well, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is ours says that they'll be contacted if there is lack of a quorum. Whereas what I think you're saying is if even one member is absent, they will be contacted to attend the meeting.
Well, I think we need to say.
They don't have.
They don't have to be.
Yeah.
You know you're gonna have a quorum and you don't, they haven't been like in the proceedings of, you know, you're talking about something you've been talking about for three months.
Uh huh.
It doesn't make sense to throw somebody that hasn't been in in those conversations. If you already have a quorum, you don't need to activate your alternate.
Okay.
So you have, the, the, the chair and the vice chair have the decision-making power of when and when not to activate the quorum. Or, sorry, the alternate.
So are we, should, should we say an alternate will be contacted if there's a lack of quorum or an even number? Cause later on, it says the alternate will only vote if there's an even number or lack of quorum. So we're not being consistent.
Right.
Unless we add it to the first sentence too.
Yeah, you may wanna take form out of it and just say like an alternate will be, a little wordsmith this, but an alternate will be, activated to fill in for proceedings when a board member is not available by the chair or vice chair, and then you get to decide when those activations per se are, whether it's just for a lack of quorum or whether it's.
Okay, so we're, we're trying to get that language right now. So an alternate will be contacted.
Oh, okay, I know.
An ac- an alternate will be activated by the chair or vice chair
to fill in for a regular member.
To fill in for a regular member. That is missing.
Who cannot participate in a hear, in a proceedings, proceeding or.
Who cannot participate.
Hearing or planning meeting, whatever, whatever word, wanting to put there.
Who cannot participate in a.
How about is unable to participate?
Who is unable. To participate in a regular meeting?
I would just say meeting.
And you can say by a decision of the board, cause even if, you know, if Ryan says last five minutes before the meeting, I, something's come up, I had an accident, my kid, this, I'm not coming. You don't necessarily have to act, you may not be able to activate your alternate if you know that you still have a quorum.
Right.
There may be no need. If you're not voting on anything that evening, you may just, there may be no need to bring in an alternate, to sit in that seat.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, maybe a person, that's.
How about if we just say, participate in, in a meeting at the discretion of the chair?
At the discretion of the chair or vice chair.
Yes, yeah.
Eric, what did you wanna say about that?
Uh, I'd like to throw, I might throw a little wrench into this. Um, you may need to do a little more looking at this.
Thank you for being so patient.
As, as Vermont is a Dillon's lost state, and as this town does not have a charter, you have to work within the parameters of the, of the current statute. The reason you didn't have language for an alternate is because it's not, it's not permitted through the current statute to the state to have an alternate for a planning commission. So.
Can we just vote on a charter?
But you just said that we do.
And you have, the town of Lud, the town and village both had rules of procedures for their, all their boards. And it's written, and there is a.
And we, didn't we just vote on becoming a charter? We just voted on that at the last election.
No.
And.
That's just one, that's just one article on that charter about how to vote.
Okay.
So.
Twenty-four VSA, something has language on alternates that's allowed by the state.
And we took this language from, we.
No, not for planning, for DRB, yes, not for planning.
We, well, we took it out of the DRB.
Yeah, it's, it's allowed in the state statute for DRB.
But it's not allowed for planning.
It's not, it's not, there's no language for an alternate in the state statute for planning commissions.
Well, why don't.
Just let me finish, I mean.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you look around Springfield, Chester, Mount Holly, Burlington, uh, Proctorsville, none of those towns have alternates. Because they have to operate within the parameters of those, of the state statute. You can't just, you know, you just can't make your own rules on something and say, hey, we want fifteen members. And the statute says three between three and nine. So, I would just ask that you look into that before you put too much more work into this, because it may not be something that you can do.
What's, what, what was the statute you quoted?
Oh, I just know it's in twenty-four VSA, I don't know the actual text.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not gonna take that much time, never mind.
That, that's why there was no language. That's why they're trying to create this line, that's why, there's a reason why there was no language for the past one hundred years.
They don't look it up.
One hundred. Well, I'm gonna contact the Secretary of State, but maybe we can agree on the language, and if it is okay, well, at least we'll have that, we'll have that ready to go.
Yeah.
We can come back to it.
I don't wanna come back to it. Let's agree on the language and then we'll find out if it's okay.
We're gonna have to though. Yeah, okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, but the lang- we.
Okay, so.
We can agree on the language, but once we look it up, it might change.
Right, okay. So here's what we got. An alternate will be activated by the chair or vice chair to fill in for a.
Regular member.
Regular.
Member.
Regular member who is unable to participate in a meeting at the discretion of the chair or vice chair. The alternate must be a resident of Ludlow and on the voter checklist. The alternate will only vote if there is an even number or lack of quorum. The alternate shall abide by all rules of procedure.
Okay, so.
So, could we put that into a motion?
I, I thought, I thought we said that, um, once they're activated, they get all.
Full privileges.
Full privileges to.
Right, so we don't need the rest of that stuff?
So you don't need the rest of it.
Yeah.
It's redundant.
Where it says the, the alternate will only vote.
Yeah, just, I would just strike it.
Strike that whole sentence.
Yeah, and then just leave the alternate shall abide by all rules of procedure.
Okay.
Like everyone else does.
So can we?
Yeah.
Put that in the form of a motion and vote on it? Just get, and then if it's okay with the Secretary of State?
Well, I will make a motion that we accept this language pending.
Acceptance.
Well, pending checking the state statutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Call in favor?
Bye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay.
I found it, it's not in the.
Yeah, go ahead.
After we make a motion.
The twenty-four VSA forty-four sixty, the municipal legislative body may appoint alternates to a planning commission, a board of adjustment, or a development and review board for a term to be determined by the legislative body.
Perfect.
Thanks. So maybe we don't have to.
We don't have to.
Have that language now. I mean, have that condition about contacting.
Well, guess what?
Can we read it?
Can I, can I amend my motion?
Yeah, can you amend your motion? Can we read that?
Yeah.
Well, amend my motion to make a motion to accept this language regarding alternates for the planning commission.
Yep, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Municipal planning grant, consider public comments and decide on possible changes to employee housing. Oh, actually, I should have probably put. Oh yeah, why don't I put that, I didn't, I guess I didn't think we'd have a lot of changes to the conversions of use. Did I warn that? Consider public comments and decide on possible changes to employee housing and rooming house standards. Consider public comments and decide on possible changes to new and modified definitions. I didn't warn that conversions and changes of use, considering language to change that. Did we have any changes we wanted to make to that? You know, Ryan, you found, and some of our public here found.
I just have may need clarification.
Right, I didn't warn it though. Is that a problem? I don't know. I didn't put it in our agenda for this part. I should have. If we wanna accept it the way it is? Do you wanna put it off to another public hearing? Later in the year or in the grant process? What do you think, Allison?
Can do that.
I think the intent was there, um, your agenda and your warning.
So you think we can talk about it? Okay.
I'm, I'm okay to be challenged on that too.
Okay.
I, I, I beg to differ. I don't think it was warned properly, so I think we need to warn it. Otherwise, we're gonna get challenged.
Okay.
So, I think we need to table it and warn, you know, warn it. Maybe you can warn it for the next meeting and have a quick hearing in the beginning.
Yeah, it's a lot of trouble to have a hearing, a lot.
I know, but.
I know, it's not, it wasn't.
It wasn't on, so.
Wasn't warned, yeah. I guess I didn't think it was gonna have a huge issue, but I should have thought about that. All right, so let's do our next agenda item, which is employee housing. Let's consider changes to employee housing.
Okay.
And we did have some size of rooms. This is an appropriate place to put it, cause it's in our standards. We wanna add a D after our C. And come up with some dimensions. Now we have the Rutland dimensions and we have Boston dimensions to consider.
I, I, I feel the Rutland dimensions are a little bit small. I would like to see it based on, like, we, we talked about a two-person room. I don't know, do we need to do a one-person room? Cause when you look at it, it talks about, in one of the definitions, rooms are for two, I don't know, we could do one person and then additional for the two-person. And then any additional if it's a three-person room.
Okay.
Type of thing.
So I'm gonna add a D here.
Yeah. Size of rooms.
I'm not, because I'm not in my Word document. Um, I have it on my desktop, I'll get it there. Just wanna make sure I'm using the right one that Martha gave me. Let's download this one. All right, so we're gonna add a section D and we're gonna get at dimensions. Okay, how do we wanna word it?
I would say min- h, minimum size, one person.
The minimum.
Square footage for a one-person room.
Square footage.
A one-person room, one oc- one occupant in a room.
For a.
For a single occupancy.
For a single occup- for a single occupancy bedroom, do we say?
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's see, bedroom.
Eighty square feet? It's small, but it's, it's the minimum. We're talking about minimums.
Well.
What do you think, Allison?
There needs to be, yeah, at least one, yeah, one fif- what we were talking, saying one fifty, one twenty, ten by twelve.
We're talking about one and then we'll add on for additional.
Sure. So, I wonder, is there, is there any health standard or?
I'm just trying to find it for my head of.
You know, yeah, do we have, yeah. You, I don't think you will find it, frankly.
I don't, I, I looked, I didn't see it, but.
Yeah. Definition and, and everything to do with bedrooms is
fuzzy.
All over the place, yeah. Yes.
I know, I was told Rutland is seven by ten, which I thought was pretty small.
Can't wait to go five by ten.
I think eight by ten is small, but.
Yeah, that's.
Read that one too, months ago.
And did you read it too, seven by ten?
Yeah.
I thought that was small, really small. And then an additional fifty for each additional occupant.
Which is only five by ten.
Yeah.
But there's, uh.
That's like a bed.
It wasn't completely apples, apples, right? It wasn't employee housing.
Yeah, as a bed.
Right.
There might have been some like care with it, right? I remember knowing at that time it wasn't apples to apples, might have been like apples orange.
Right. But still, I, I, I will be fine with a ten by twelve, if that's what Brian suggested.
Hmm, that would make more sense too. One hundred, hundred and twenty square feet?
For first occupant and then add fifty?
Hundred and seventy square feet for two.
Uh huh.
It's, I mean.
It's ten by seventeen.
What are we agreeing on for one right here?
Well, well, I'm just thinking how restrictive it would be for large rooms, for large bedrooms. And I'm just trying to think, I've been in, I mean, been in some small, like door, like dormitory style buildings.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about, frads and.
So like, you know, like a dorm, you know, you have two people basically in a ten in a ten by twelve.
Yeah.
You know, so. How do you, especially converting older homes, they're gonna have smaller rooms. So we'd be really potentially limiting the number of bedrooms.
Right.
Based on this. On what we decide for size of a bedroom for a single occupancy versus a uh two two occupants.
So a ten by twelve is a hundred and twenty square feet.
Yep.
Okay, so we're saying eighty for one, a hundred and twenty for two?
That's adding forty.
And we're saying eighty, right, are we still saying eighty?
Yeah, so we're saying eighty for one and one twenty for two, so we're making it a bit bigger.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
And then. And then forty for each additional, because there may be triples.
We could say forty for each additional if allowed, cuz I I think over two occupants for a bedroom is at the discretion of the Fire Marshal.
Oh, okay, then that I like that.
You know.
I like that.
Wait, say that again.
I mean, I don't feel that we have the ability to to designate a square footage for more than two occupants because more than two occupants is at the discretion of the Fire Marshal.
Okay. So can we just say that more than two occupants will be at the discretion of the Fire Marshal, no?
No, just leave it because that will happen anyway.
Not, we don't need to say that?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is all we wanna add, the minimum square footage for a single occupancy bedroom will be eighty square feet, the minimum square footage for a W occupancy bedroom will be a hundred and twenty square feet?
Yeah.
Is that all we wanna add?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Is this just in the definition of employee housing?
Yes.
Yeah, this is in our standards section, standards of.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it goes through all districts. Um, and does that, did we do it? I'm looking at my notes, um, we have Suzanne commenting on if it's sprinkled, more people are allowed, but you were saying that's all intended on the Fire Marshal anyway.
Fire Marshal. Mm-hmm. And we also, I have notes that we we had um employee housing, definition housing that is owned. And we had talked about maybe leased instead of controlled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a change you wanna make?
I think so, or facilitated by an employer.
Okay. Owned, leased or facilitated?
Yeah.
So I'll make that change.
Mm-hmm. Let's see.
Okay. Okay, so what other comments did we have?
That's it.
Find my definitions. Okay, so the rooming boarding house, we talked about number of people in each room, but Allison was saying that needs to go into standards. And not into definitions. Do we have any, oh yeah, how do we? So the other change we wanna make, well, I wanna make, I don't know if you guys agree or not, is to add. Employee housing to our commercial districts.
Oh, yes.
Is that something we all agree on?
I agree with that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna save this.
So that's gonna go under B.
Is that gonna go under B or are we just gonna go into our commercial district and add it there?
It would just be in the commercial, yeah, edit the commercial district standards, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna open up village zoning and do that. Got way too many villages.
Got a couple weddings coming up there?
Yeah, I got some weddings. It's marriage season, Judy.
I know.
Oh yeah, we have three justices here, anybody wanna get married? I'm gonna find my latest village zoning. It's gotta be in word.
They must be voting soon on the um that state bill.
On the housing bill?
Yeah.
Well, didn't they adjourn already, but they gotta go back because you might veto stuff?
I thought they adjourned.
Terry, I have a question and maybe out of order and it may already have been addressed, I just have a question regarding um. Rooming and boarding houses, is there any guidelines regarding bathrooms? For how many people or is that something that's under somebody else's jurisdiction?
I think that's something that's important. What do you guys think?
I agree.
I agree, yeah.
But.
I'm finding my commercial district too.
I would have to do some research on it unless you have any guidance for us.
I don't, I like to say it under somebody else's umbrella also, but I can't say that.
I would definitely think that would be more health, Department of Health and Safety, yeah.
Health.
Health Department, yeah.
Okay, here's the, here's the big.
Can that be verified?
Yeah, we we'd look into it, but.
Is would employee housing be a, my permitted use in commercial or a conditional use?
Would probably apply to employee housing and rooming and boarding houses, I just.
Are you talking about bathrooms, Jean?
I'm making sure these folks have enough bathrooms, that's all.
Right, no, wh-.
What do you think, Allison?
Yeah.
Wait, what are you?
So we're doing two things.
We're doing two things, I'm gonna, let's stick with yours.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're, well, let's go back to bathrooms, I just wanna finish this.
No, finish this and then go to bathrooms.
Villagercy district, right, okay, so what I'm asking you is, should it be a permitted use or a, I think it should be a conditional use because all this stuff and conditional uses are.
Yeah.
Well, let's see, I know, cuz the next week, next month, I hope we're gonna talk about. Streamlining the permitting process for some of this stuff. What do you think, looking at what is in permitted and what isn't conditional, where do you think it fits?
I I think it should be a permitted use if we're looking to streamline, especially where it's town water, towns, you know, town utilities.
And I'm looking, you know, like daycare center is a permitted use and it's. It's the same thing, it's it's.
Yeah.
People, you know.
Tourist home is kinda the same thing too.
Yeah, it's people.
Allison, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, the intensity is usually what you look at when determining, you've got tourist home.
Right, right.
Up there already, uh which.
Exactly.
We're thinking of, well, we're talking about cuz.
Kinda change.
It's not in there, but you've got bed and breakfast, so you look at the intensity, um.
We can put it there now and then if.
I'd say it's the same, in the same type of category.
Next, next month, we're gonna talk about it, so we could move it if we if we chose to.
And you have your conditions within your standards.
Yeah, I'm thinking too.
Or at least as long as you have strong standards, you can be comfortable that it's a permitted use, but if you want to make sure.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna.
Mm-hmm.
The DRB can impose additional conditions, then be on it under conditional, you are.
Are we all saying we want it to be a permitted use?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Okay. This is gonna be messy, but I'm gonna add it up here. Okay, I'm gonna save that, send that to Martha, Allison.
Employee housing and rooming and boarding or just employee housing?
Rooming boarding is not here anywhere? No. What do you guys think?
Think they're they're complementary in one another, so.
Yeah, I think they're the same.
Hey, that makes sense, it should be in the commercial district.
Yeah.
Although I see under conditional use, and I don't know what it means, transitional housing, number twenty one.
Oh, yeah. Some tr- it's transitional housing like.
So transitional housing is usually, yes.
Prison, people that went to prison or that are recovering from drugs.
Recovering.
Okay, so that would make sense that it's conditional, okay, got it.
But again, another one to flag that it has no standards in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bylaws, no definition.
Oh, wow.
It's just in there.
Aw, man, we definitely have to flag that guy. Okay, so we're adding rooming boarding house up here?
Yep.
Yeah, it makes sense cuz, you know, it's in the downtown area.
Right.
Anything else we wanna add in here? Do we wanna add Ian?
It's not already?
I don't see it.
It should be.
Nine unconditional.
Nine unconditional, oh yeah, you're right, it already is there, thank you. Are we all set?
Oh, yeah.
All set with this part, now I'm gonna go back and talk about bathrooms?
Well, I don't really know how we can intelligently speak about bathrooms right now.
Yeah.
I don't have information.
Yeah.
You have to go back.
Something will happen at a later date.
Because we'll go down the rabbit hole of single, single occupancy bathrooms, lockers, locker room style bathrooms, I mean, that's, I think, more health, health officer.
Yeah.
And I would hope common sense.
Agreed.
Wouldn't have.
Just gotta save this in another spot.
I I say that with a.
Tom and Jean?
Yes.
Saving it and download, so I remember to send it to Martha.
Okay.
Okay, so. Yeah, Eric.
You may want to have some thought on that at some point.
Bathrooms.
For example, the change to use that is. Going through the process of prospect.
From Prospect Street?
You know, that that houses forty two residents, um.
In seventeen rooms.
There's three, that's three bathrooms, so that's fourteen people per bathroom. So.
Oh, man, I think we should put something in.
Yeah, that does try and be my points.
Uh, yeah, that's a good point.
They do, initially, they said it was three, then at the, at the DRV meeting, they said they had four, uh. Were even five and there's six.
For how many, for forty people?
Forty two, there's a forty, the largest.
And and do you have any idea what, within that bathroom, is it multiple toilets or multiple showers or is it?
Yeah, are they like separate, like at school?
I doubt it is because it's a small, so yeah, I doubt it is.
Yeah, cuz they were hard to leave their floor.
Oh, my God, that's, I think we should put something in.
And again.
Just so we have something.
Can we, we can't do it next month, but I'd like to do some research on it.
No, we have, taking it to the public hearing.
May I clarify that too?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
They showed, they had a a floor plan, it showed um. Two, two bedroom units with what looked like paid big enough space for a full bathroom. And one. Um. Seven or nine bedroom unit with two full bathrooms and a powder room. So they're going.
Three and a half.
That was twenty six people with two full bathrooms and powder room. Two units with eight people with one full bathroom per unit.
So so a full bathroom being like three.
A full bathroom being a shower, twenty seven.
That's what I mean, a three piece.
Yeah. Um, and they didn't show the specifics of each bathroom, but based on the scale of of the floor plan, it looked to be a full bathroom.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
So that that's my understanding of what I saw, um. On on what they presented at the DRV meeting.
Let's put something in here.
Okay.
I feel like we kinda have to because there's like.
Even if it's not perfect, we have something.
Yeah, agreed.
Because if they're agreeing on plans prior to a health officer, even potentially setting foot in the building.
And I don't know if Terry sent the information to you that she sent to to us, um, aside of of what we discussed, um.
Oh, yeah, I do, I sent that to you, right, voters' rates?
There are rules about um.
Renters' rates?
Renters' rights, um, eight people per bathroom.
There you go.
It has a full shower.
Well, let's just do that then.
That's 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 perfect.
Let's do that.
That's a standard.
Okay, the minimum.
Yeah, whatever you sent us, Terry was, I think, reasonable and.
I mean, I was thinking, I grew up in a large family.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's. Yeah, right.
Six kids.
So, I know, I grew up in seven kids, two bathrooms.
Yep.
And yet, we had to wait, a lot.
You had to wait, but but eight people and a bathroom isn't.
There was something like for about ten people. For for one thing in in um eight people per shower or something like that.
Okay, the minute, the minimum amount of bathrooms per.
I I just like eight people per per, and and I think it should say three piece bathroom, meaning sink, shower, tub, shower.
Right. Okay, so the minimum amount of bathrooms.
Not a half bath.
A full bath.
So how about?
Yeah, say full bath, there you go.
How about going the other way, so the ma- maximum amount of occupants per full bathroom can be no greater than eight?
I like that better.
Thank you.
Maximum.
Good words, Smith, in there, buddy.
What, say it again?
The maximum amount of occupants. Per bathroom cannot be greater than eight.
Cannot be greater than eight.
Say full bathroom or, I don't know why I feel uh.
Yeah, full, full, full bathroom, full.
You know, the assessors have terms, three quarter bath is a shower stall.
Yeah.
Full, full covers it, fuller, fuller, three quarter, but I mean, we wanna get to.
Yeah.
What is a three quarter, do we wanna say?
Three quarters is a shower stall, sink and toilet instead of a shower tub combination, yeah.
Instead of.
Yeah, I know, cuz I, cuz I'm on the board of pet tax abatement.
We know.
Yeah.
We walk in bathrooms all the time, so do we, what if they only have a three quarter though, how how many do we save for that?
It's all same, I mean, it's it's getting showered or cleaned, I mean, I I could go three quarter to full.
That's the same.
True, okay, so.
So a minimum would be a three quarter.
Per three quarter.
Right, cuz it's smaller than a full.
Three quarter or full bathrooms, three quarter or full.
Right.
Yep, that covers all the bases.
Bathrooms.
Yep.
Wait, the maximum amount of occupancy per three quarter or full bathroom cannot be greater than eight? Is that good?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, where are we? Let's page it back, so. Consider, oh, we already are got up to there, definitions. Do you have any more comments, do Judy, do you wanna say something, Judy?
Just just to, um, just throwing it out there because I'm not sure what employee housing or boarding houses. And there's no um mention in here, and maybe there doesn't need to be in terms of um kitchen facilities or refrigerators.
Hmm.
And any of that kind of common sense items that you might need if you were living in a boarding house.
Which was a concern that people on Wilbur Avenue have, that they don't have access to a kitchen.
Yeah, um, so I don't, I'm just throwing it out there, um.
Well, if. One of the things I did think about, and and I understand what Jean's saying about kitchen facilities is, for instance, refrigeration. Like, how many refrigerators do you need to have per person?
For forty two people.
So if I'm looking at, we say eight people to a bathroom, and again, I'll go back to, I grew up in a very large family. I would think eight people with one refrigerator would be, but the refrigerator also would need to be defined by cubic feet. Because you could say, here you go, here's your dorm refrigerator, or or your little apartment sized.
Starting.
You know, like a, like an eighteen cubic or twenty cubic square foot refrigerator, something like that.
Was that in that renters thing I sent you, I don't think it said anything about refrigeration.
Is that in?
It it didn't specify, I don't know.
I don't think it did.
So kinda going back to like the dorm life, right, you you would bring in the mini fridge, but you also had, you know, the cafeteria, so, you know, it was the dining dining hall type thing.
Correct. You have a kitchen.
Yeah.
You have a kitchen.
Which is on site, so to bring that to our situation here is the dining hall, the mountain. Are they gonna be getting all their meals up at the base lodge or Jackson Gore? If if we're assuming that all these, all these tenants, all these are gonna be working for the mountain, so.
Yeah, they're coming from South America and they're gonna have a mini fridge.
Do they get?
Oh, do you assume that in this town?
No, I, I don't, I, it's not, I wouldn't assume it for all, but I would say for, for the vast majority.
There, but because there are, you know, there are other establishments in town that have people.
Yep.
Yeah, Troy's places too.
Been imported, if, if you will.
Sure, I mean.
But I'm just thinking, you know.
I'm just saying.
We wanna make sure that people have their basic needs met in these places.
But we did say up above, um, any other permits or approvals shall, may be required by the Vermont Department of Health's rental housing health code.
Yeah.
So we did say, you know, and the fire safety stuff up above.
Right, well, the fire safety stuff, that'll be taken care of, we're talking about things like refrigeration.
And just wondering if it's in that rental housing health code.
Well, s- exactly, so I'm wondering if we're kinda working out of our purview, you know, as far as, okay, we're, you know, talking about permitted and conditional uses of, of structures versus, you know, health ordinances. I, I don't know where we're.
We are including health ordinance, I, I just think that we could, you know, I mean, I, I want them to have refrigerators, but I wonder if it's in that health thing, I have it here somewhere.
But I, I guess, so I'll, I'll say this, so I'm pulling a permit, right, to do this, to, to convert a home. And in the permit, it says you need eight refrigerators.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, yep, I got a, and then who's ever, really, Jared, you're gonna go count the refrigerators and say, no, no CO, you don't have eight refrigerators. I, I, you know, I'm trying to bring it to reality a little bit, um, I'm not discr- I'm not like dismissing it at all, I mean, we, we need to have, you know, healthy living conditions, but trying to bring reality down to it a little bit, how do, like, whose responsibility is it that these, these tenants have?
The town health officer?
Yeah, exactly.
Can we maybe?
That would be the person, if somebody had a complaint, that would check it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
If I could jump in for one second, please?
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
And according to healthvermont.gov, it says shared bathroom facilities, the occupants not more than two dwelling units which are located in the same dwelling they share a bathroom facilities. So I think that's already standard by the state of Vermont, how many bathrooms you need to have per dwelling unit.
How many did it say?
It says not more, the occupants not more than two dwelling units which are located in the same dwelling they share a bathroom.
Two.
Two dwelling units, but that could be an apartment.
Two dwelling units, okay. Yeah, that could be like sixteen people.
Yep.
So I'm glad we did it by.
That was in your, your standards that you sent, that was Steve just quoted.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if I may get back to refrigeration, um, you know, it's a, a public health safety issue to have sanitary sewers and.
Correct.
And portable water, um, is not up to the public interest to make sure people don't eat rancid foods. So I think you're, you're going down a little too far into the refrigeration.
Yeah, we're going down the rabbit hole, I think. Okay, can we, can we move on?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm good.
Did we have any other disputes with any, any other suggestions for, I don't see any. Do you wanna get into the transient rabbit hole, are we good with that?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm good with it.
All right, I'm moving on to agenda item number nine, which is survey results. Allison, you got any survey results for us?
Oh, no, it doesn't close till the end of May.
I was gonna say, it's not closed.
Yeah, I hope that, I think our plan was for the, where community.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about Virginia.
This is from planning, planning for the year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Community, it's for, I do know that there's a good, I mean, it's been two weeks, I think, since I looked at it, and the time I looked at it, I think there were ninety-eight responses.
Wow.
Which is a, I mean, comparatively to some of the surveys we send out, they get like four, sixteen, you know, it's pretty good.
I'm telling you, those postcards, those postcards are not a bad idea.
And that was, that was at least two weeks ago since I last looked, so I bet that number's gone up.
Agreed.
Yeah, just when I talked to, um, Martha, she said there was sixty-eight people had, that was like last Tuesday.
Yeah, mentioned, I know.
And that she was, her only comment was she was surprised at how negative people were about short-term rentals. I'm like, really, you were surprised? She's like, yep, I was very surprised.
Interesting.
I wasn't surprised.
May I ask if, um, did my wife and I share an email account, can I, she respond from her work email to the survey?
Yeah, of course, yeah, you're both can definitely participate in the survey.
It's anonymous, the, um.
It's just IP address.
We, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
So you, good job.
Did you get a postcard from us?
We did.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Did you get one or?
How many devices?
Oh, good.
My, my cousin Paula did not.
You got a bunch of, you have cousin Paula going?
Did not.
What?
I, then she, she.
If she was on the village checklist, that's how we did it.
I, yeah, I'll.
She ran off the, I don't know.
I'll, I'll message you, so, you know, I don't know.
I got some in my car, I can bring.
I don't know why she didn't get one.
I put a whole bunch in the town offices too.
Did you put some in the library?
I put some, a bunch in the library and in the children's library.
I figured that would be really good.
Yeah, the only, only thing I didn't do in my fulfillment is I didn't contact the Catholic church, cuz I knew it was, you know, about filling in the bulletin, cuz there's only religious stuff in there.
Oh, gotcha.
And I did put it on, um, front porch forum, I put it in my Facebook account and.
I haven't shared on the QR code with a lot of people.
Yeah, the QR, yeah, I did the QR code, um, they couldn't, she couldn't figure out how to, how to put the QR code on the town website. And she started putting it on as a.
I thought it was on there.
As a JPG, I suggested putting it on as a, um, you know, a site, that might work, so I don't know if she did that or not.
I thought the survey was very good, and it was, it was easy to manipulate or to go through it, fill out the answers, and I thought it was good.
I thought it was too, and I like, I like Jeanie, your question was in there about handicapped parking. Yep.
Oh, my.
The town website doesn't make it work.
Yeah, does it have a QR code though?
No, just that the link, the link's there.
No, but the link works, because I think.
Yeah, the link works.
I helped somebody do it with the link, so I know it works.
Well, I have more postcards if anybody needs something like that.
Actually, Andy and I were guinea pigging like our spouses and stuff, taking the survey when we were writing the postcard.
Oh, good.
So we could figure out how long it took.
I was making everybody in my family take it, so.
That's how I know the QR worked, because I did the QR, we were actually doing it, so.
Yeah, I did the QR, you just put your photo on it, your photo there.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but we, we wanted to make sure it worked before those things went out.
Yeah, I'm really glad you did that, you did, you did a great job.
Thanks.
I appreciate it. All right, so next month, agenda planning, we're gonna talk about survey results, and we're gonna talk about streamlining the permitting, admitting process, which is part of our grant. Martha has a really very efficient table for looking at residential, commercial, and preservation districts at the same time.
Are we gonna talk about conversions and changes of use and warning it or something?
Yeah, we'll have to add that, huh? Conversions and changes of use. All right, moving on, we are up to our comments section, other business, do we have any board member comments? She just made a whole bunch of them. Do we have any public citizen comments?
They just made a whole bunch of them.
I was looking at our friend from Roland.
Are you with Roland? I do live with him.
Yeah, cuz she, she used to work for Rutland.
The Housing Trust Fund.
The Housing Trust Fund, yeah, that's very cool, you're a wealth of information, I'm sure. Okay, we are journeying instead of at eight o'clock at, if we.
They did a good job.
Yeah, we did.
They've been going over.
We thought we were gonna go at eight o'clock. Allison can, can get home to her second grader. Do I, can I have a motion for adjournment? Have we needed one of those?
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
I was in favor, and we are out of here.